Okay, here we go. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I would like to call the May 2nd, 2023 meeting of the Cloverdale Planning Commission to order at six on the dot PM. Commissioner Horwitz, would you like to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please? Thank you.
Act of the United States of America, which is a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. City Clerk, can we have a rule call, please?
Thank you, Vice Chair. Let the record reflect that all commissioners are present with the exception of Chair AC and Commissioner Spingler, meaning that alternate Commissioners Carney and Cadel will be participating and voting tonight.
Thank you. Do any of the commissioners present have any conflicts of interest for any items listed on tonight's agenda? No. No. Okay, Mr. City Clerk, let the record reflect that there are no commissioners with any conflicts on tonight's agenda. Thank you. Okay. Staff, are there any changes or deletions to the agenda for this evening?
No changes, Vice Chair.
Okay, thank you.
It's on.
Check.
There it goes.
Okay, public comment. Okay. So at this time, I would like to open up, uh, public comments. Any person wishing to speak to the Planning Commission on any item not listed on the agenda may do so at this time. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the Commission is not allowed to consider issues or take action on any item not listed on the agenda. Comments from the public will be allowed on all agenda items at the time each item is called. In-person commenters may fill out a speaker card before or after they have spoken. Please submit it to the City Clerk for the record. If watching on a device through Zoom, use the raise hand feature. If listening from a phone, dial star nine to raise your hand and the City Clerk will prompt you when it is your time to speak. Three minutes are allotted to each speaker. With that, I will now officially open the public comment period at 6:02 PM.
Thank you, Vice Chair. There is no one online raising their hands, and it appears that there are no members of the public wishing to speak under the public comment period.
Okay. Seeing no hands raised, I'll close the public comment at 6:03 PM. Okay, communications. The Commission may discuss at this time the written communications sent to commissioners since the last meeting. Are there any communications?
No communications have been received.
Okay, thank you. Consent calendar. All items under the consent calendar will be considered together by one action of the City Commission unless any commissioner or member of the public requests that an item be removed and considered separately. Would any member of the Commission or the public like to move an item from the consent calendar? No. Okay. Can I get a motion for the calendar? Alternate Commissioner Carney makes the motion to approve the consent calendar. Do I have a second? Okay. Horwitz, seconds. Make a roll call, please.
Thank you, Vice Chair. We'll start with the motioners. Commissioner Carney. Commissioner Horwitz.
Aye.
Commissioner Wegi. Commissioner Cadel.
Aye.
And Vice Chair Sanders.
Aye.
Alright, consent calendar passes.
Thank you. Okay. Uh, next thing would be public hearings. Um, let's see here. I will now officially open the public hearing at 6:04 PM. In-person commenters may fill out the speaker card before or after they have spoken. Please submit it to the clerk for the record. If watching on a device through Zoom, please use the raise hand feature or dial star nine to raise your hand and the clerk will prompt you when it is your turn to speak. Three minutes are allotted to each speaker. Please note, staff and the Commission will address your comments and questions after the public hearing is closed and will not enter into a dialogue with commenters. Mr. City Clerk, are there any members of the public online? Do my presentation now, Mike, if you can. Sure. Bring it up a little, get a little background on this one.
Okay, thanks, Mike. Vice Chair and Commission members, um, this is what we call a pre-zoning for an annex, a potential annexation here in town for an area known as the, uh, Six Acres. So I'm just going to walk through a quick presentation, and I know there's a lot of folks who live in Six Acres here and representative, so we have between all of us, hopefully we can answer all your questions. And, uh, at the end, we'll be asking you to support a resolution recommending to City Council adoption of an ordinance which would, uh, give the pre-zoning, and I'll just talk a little bit more about that as we get into the presentation. Next slide, Mike. So it's just over nine acres. Uh, there's 21 parcels in there, and they're, um, 20 of them are developed with homes, established homes, and they've been there a long time, and there's one undeveloped parcel. And they're all pretty much single-family homes. Again, this is pre-zoning, and this is sort of the first step towards this, uh, annexation process that starts with the city and then moves to the county. Um, it starts with the Planning Commission, the City Council, then it goes to the county to LAFCO, which is the local area formation committee. Next. So here's the project location. Uh, you can see South Cloverdale Boulevard, Lyle Lane. The shaded parcels in yellow and blue are what are included in this annexation. Next slide. So just a little bit of the background. Um, they do have a, a, a water system at the Six Acres that's, uh, in need of really replacement, and so this is the process by which they, they can get water. They have received a grant from the California State Water Resources Board Division of Safe Drinking Water that's paying for the installation of the sewer and, well, the sewer's a different grant, but this, uh, paying for the installation of the water, the water hookups, uh, and the infrastructure needed to bring Six Acres within the city's water dis- the water system. There was a pre-annexation that, uh, we worked on for quite a long time. That's included in your packet. The pre-annexation agreement has been executed. It will be replaced with a full annexation agreement when it goes to the City Council. We have a draft of that. It's currently being reviewed by, uh, our attorneys. It's going to contain much of the same content that is in the, in the pre-annexation agreement. Uh, so actually, tonight we'll be asking you to adopt the resolution so we can bring this to City Council, hopefully at the second meeting, uh, in May, which is May 24th. So if you feel compelled to support the resolution, we'll be moving forward, bringing the project to the City Council. Once that's completed, that will allow, uh, the Six Acres to apply to Sonoma County LAFCO for the for- the final sort of annexation step in the process. Thanks. So just while we're here, you know, in our zoning ordinance, it does require that the Planning Commission, you know, consider pre-annexation, uh, and make a recommendation to the council. This is just the section from the code that I wanted to show you why, why we're here. And then, next one. So the, the pre-zoning will be consistent with what's in our general plan map. So the area of Six Acres is within our urban growth boundary currently. So the implication there really is that all the areas within our urban growth boundary will eventually be in the city as the city grows. Uh, we, as part of the general plan map, which encompasses areas outside of the current city limits, but again, the ultimate area of where the city will grow, we have what we call the pre-zoning, and in this case, it's medium density residential, and that's eight units per acre. So that's the, what the pre-zoning will be as this project moves through, and ultimately when it gets into the city, it will be zoned R2 at eight units per acre. Next slide. So that's pretty much it. I know there'll be a lot of questions. Um, this has been in, in the works for several years, and this is kind of one of the first steps in really formalizing the annexation application, and we're excited to be here and, and hopefully move the project along. I know you'll probably have a lot of questions, so I'll just leave it there, and we can open it up for questions. And Vice Chair, you can open it up for public comment now, or you can have the Commission ask their questions and, and do it afterwards. It's whichever you like.
Thank you. At this time, I would like to bring it to the commissioners.
Okay.
For any comments or questions that, uh, the Commission may have for the city staff regarding this, uh, annexation. Does anybody have any questions or comments about it?
I do, as a matter of fact.
Yes. Commissioner Carney.
I think it's, I think it's on. So the, Kevin, you mentioned the, the, the state would cover the cost of the water and sewer systems, is that correct?
That's correct.
And the agreement, which is in process, we don't have a copy of, but it indicates that, that infrastructure improvements are not going to be part of this, um, particular, uh, annexation or pre-annexation agreement. In other words, uh, street repair, bridge replacement, um, sidewalks, et cetera, bringing things up to code, city code is, is not going to be incumbent upon the city to cause to be done?
That's correct. We had many discussions about this early on and through this process, and where we landed was that the roads, uh, will remain private roads, Lyle Lane and El Rancho. So it really will be incumbent upon the property owners to keep those roads, you know, in, in good shape. The state is going to pay for the sewer and water laterals to be put in, um, as long as, and the mains, the mains and the laterals, and bring it to each house. So there's, there's grant funding for that.
As, as part of that process would include, uh, the installation of hydrants that meet requirements?
Yes, that's correct. We, um, the Fire District has reviewed the annexation, um, and has made some comments on the fire hydrants. They will be included as part of the, the project.
Thank you.
Fire Department had some comments, and I assume that they will be, in terms of meeting the state fire codes and things like that, they, they will be incorporated?
They will. The, uh, there, as part of this state process, there's an engineer onboard GHD, and they're designing the system. They've received the fire comments, and they're going to work with the Fire District to incorporate those, or, I mean, yeah, that's, they're going to work with the Fire District.
And the cost of bringing the fires, the, the fire protection system up to code, is that, who bears that cost?
It's included in the grant.
From the state?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Else? Sandra?
I do have some questions, but I want to hear from the public first.
Okay.
I have a one, uh, one question, and that is regarding the water services, of course. Um, specifically, are the water laterals that are going to be brought in to supply water to these homes, are they going to be individually metered, or is this going to be a single master meter that's going to have to be divvied up by somebody at some point for the people that live there?
I believe they're individually metered.
They are individually metered.
Sage, yeah.
Okay.
We, we talked about, uh, a master meter in the beginning, but it makes more sense to have individual meters.
That's what I thought. We, for some reason, I had thought that we had talked about that at one point in time, but, uh, seems like individual meters make a lot more sense, just because, you know, you don't have to have somebody go around and collect from everybody, so. Okay. Um, if there are no other comments or questions from the commissioners, I'd like to open it up for a public comment at this time. Uh, keep in mind that you, we do have a three-minute limitation. Please fill out a speaker card and hand it to the City Clerk if you are in person. If you're on Zoom, please use the raise hand feature, and on the phone, uh, use the star nine to raise your hand, and the, and the clerk will let you know when it is your time to speak. Do we have any, uh, public comments at this time?
Thank you, Vice Chair. No one is raising their hand online, and it appears no members of the public present are coming to the dice.
Nobody? Okay. Uh, we will close public comment at 6:16 PM. Thank you, Mr. Clerk, and I will bring it back to the Commission for any further comments or questions.
So my, uh, question I have is, can you switch it over to the, uh, map? Uh, the other one.
Yeah, I don't like that one.
Okay. The one that says, um, El Rancho Drive, what are we doing there? Because, so we have the blue section and the yellow section, and then we have the centerpiece here, so are we not annexing this part right here?
We are. It, we had a discussion with the county about this, and we thought it might be a potential problem because there's, we're going to, isn't there, is there a parcel in the middle?
Yeah, that, the, the, uh, Rento. The Rento Drive is technically a parcel. It's one parcel with that vineyard.
Yeah, so the map really should show the road as being colored in and being part of this. It, it, it was a potential issue, but we were able to work that out with the county. We didn't want to create those two, three blue ones to the south as an island, so they'll all be connected as part of the annexation.
Okay.
So if that's going to be part of the annexation as well, is that also going to be zoned R2, or is that going to be, it's a different zone for Ag or whatever it is?
It will be zoned R2, the whole thing.
It will be?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Do we have any other questions or comments from the Commission?
I do. Where is, I, is the annexation going all the way to Highway One, O1, 101, to Clear East, or where, is it just the colored areas?
Just the colored areas.
Okay.
We, we had discussions about potentially bringing more in, but the state grant wasn't going to cover land that would be developed as part of this. It was really to get folks who need new, uh, water, to get water, and it's not for speculative development.
Plus, uh, part, I think we're, the project is relying on a couple, uh, CEQA exemptions.
Yeah, that's true.
Exemptions from the California, California Environmental Quality Act, and one of them talks about, uh, annexing proper, annex, annexing properties that are developed with private structures and the only new, you know, with no construction plan, but the only construction that is allowed is extension, extension of utilities, but only utilities that are large enough or have the capacity to serve those properties that are being annexed. So, or yes, as they are now, you know, so if that, if the vineyard came in, the, the, essentially that, that exemption wouldn't work and...
It would be kind of growth inducing.
Yeah.
Potentially. And so the, Rafael's right, the, the, we were using a CEQA exemption, and it just would, if, if those, if those other properties were in there, it would not be as clean, and we'd be doing a lot more studies and, and paperwork, basically.
Um, another question having to do with the private roads. Can you talk a little bit about that, about maintenance liability? Oh. Another question would be about the private roads. Can you talk a little bit about maintenance, um, standards, um, liability, things like that?
Well, it's, it's on, it's incumbent on the property owners to keep the road, uh, in a decent shape. I mean, Lyle Lane's in really good shape now, and so they do a good job at keeping it that way. Um, it's going to be on them to, you know, maintain their, their road. In terms of liability, I'm not really sure. I mean, I think that they would be liable for any accidents that happen there. I'm not sure on that one. Commissioner Wegi.
Kevin, can you give us a timeline of how this would go about? Like, we're going to annex it, and then what's the process, and how long will it take? And what are the, um, what's the community that section there, what are they expecting?
Uh, yes, and Mike, if someone is raising their hand, so we might want to...
I was going to address that if we can go to public hearing again if you'd like. That's at the Chair's discretion. Unfortunately, they did miss the public hearing time, but it's up to you if you'd like to reopen it after, uh, this discussion.
Yes, I would like to reopen it after this.
So our, we, we've been working on this, as Ms. Taylor will tell you, for many years, um, but we're started, in terms of the city process, this is the first step, and then again, hopefully it will go to City Council this month, and then that will allow the project to, uh, pursue the final annexation with the county. So that whole process, I mean, I, if I'm going to guess, would be another six months or so. Um, and then the timeline, I, I would, I'd maybe defer to somebody from Six Acres to give us a timeline if you want to know about the infrastructure installation. Um, I know right now they're working on plans. They've seen the fire comments, and we're working through Engineering Department to look at the plans and approve those plans. Um, maybe someone else could address the timeline on the installation of, of all the infrastructure.
And when they're sharing the timeline, also the grant. To make sure that we're within that timeframe.
We, we have monthly meetings with the state grant, uh, administrators, Six Acre folks. Uh, there's an attorney from UC Davis who's on the Zoom call, and I think we're, in terms of timelines, I don't know the exact time it's up, but we're doing well in terms of the grant. So, um, I, but I'm sorry, I don't know the exact date.
Thank you. Do we have anybody from Six Acres here tonight that would like to speak?
Talk to Lori. What's that? You, you could reopen the public hearing if you want.
Okay, okay, sorry. So, okay, I'd like to reopen it to, uh, public comment at this time, 6:22, uh, three minutes, you know, speaker card, hand raised, star nine on the phone.
One, one moment, Chair. All right, Lori Lyle, we've given you permission to speak. If you can unmute yourself, you'll have three minutes for the public comment.
Hello, thank you for allowing me to comment. Um, this is Lori Lyle. My, uh, family owns the vineyard, um, that is, um, to the east of the Six Acres annexation area. And just to clarify, um, El Rancho Drive is actually a continuation of one of the vineyard parcels, and as the planners have explained, that complicates the annexation considerably by including that. So at this point, El Rancho Drive would not be included in the annexation, but certainly in the future, our family has the desire and the goal of, um, annexing the entire vineyard. Is there a question? Yes?
State.
Um, actually, I was trying to remember one more comment I wanted to make. Um, oh, about the, the, as Kevin indicated, the grant, um, is still active. Uh, the timeline for, um, completing the improvements runs through 2025. Um, there's a lot of work yet to do on that, and, um, that is for the water system. We're hoping that the sewer system, uh, timeline catches up with that. Um, and, um, South Cloverdale, um, Water District, which is, includes Church Lane, is also working, um, in conjunction with our efforts to include some utilities for that area as well. So there are some things that could complicate the timeline, but it's all moving forward, and we're hopeful that it'll be done within the next few months. That would conclude my, um, my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Lori. I would like to ask you a question regarding the location of the well or wells that you have, uh, that feed water to the Six Acres community.
Mm-hmm.
Is that well currently located?
The, the, the current Six Acres well is on the south or the east side of the freeway, uh, southeast of the railroad tracks, um, and kind of down in the river basin. Uh, it's a, it's quite a, a distance and, and across several utility or infrastructure constraints to get to the existing well.
Okay, thank you. Can we look at that on the map, please?
I'm not sure you have a map that shows that right now.
We can, if we can go back to the page that shows the zoning, I think that it might be close enough to be in there, if I remember correctly.
I think, uh...
So if I, so if I'm correct, I think, go back to the, the one with the zone, that one there? That squiggly line kind of on the right-hand side, isn't that the, isn't that the continuation of Lyle Lane on the east side of the highway? So is it in that area, or is it on the other side of, um, Asty Road over there?
This is Lori again. It is on the other side of Asty Road, um, in one of those lime green areas. Oh my.
So it's just south of the wastewater treatment?
Yes, that's correct. Yes.
In that area?
Yes.
Okay. What's the plan for the well after this annexation is complete and, uh, water system is basically rerouted to the water main in Cloverdale Boulevard there?
Discussions about that, and I think the city's interest is to potentially use the well for maybe non-potable water, but I don't think we've resolved exactly what's going to happen. But we have indicated that if possible, you know, we would like to have access to it. Um, I'm not sure that it would be adequate for, for our potable water system, but, um...
Probably not, but maybe, probably not for potable water, but maybe for raw water or irrigation or something. Who, who is going to own that well after this process is complete? Lori?
Yeah. We're still talking about that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. So, and Eric, the, in the, in the documentation, it said the well is six feet, there's no, um, annuita, I mean, there's an annuita, but it's not sealed, there's not, there's not, uh, concrete seal on top, so there's...
So it's not a sanitary seal there?
Might have to be sealed up.
Do we have any other, do we have any other public comments before I bring you back?
Thank you, Vice Chair. Looks like no one's raising their hand online, and no one is coming to this podium. Thank you, Vice Chair. Looks like no one's raising their hand online and no one is coming to this podium.
No? Okay, so I would like to close public comment at 6:28 PM. And, uh, bring it back to the commission for final comments.
I have a, I have another question. What's the current status of sewer handling in that area? And what will happen after, I guess they're hooked up to the city system?
They're on septic, septic systems. Some of them are, some of them are hooked into the sewer, that's right. There's a few on sewer, but some are on septic, so it's a mix of, of both.
So will the septic systems then have to be officially closed?
Yes.
And sealed and all that?
Do the, the county does the permitting for septic systems.
Do we have any other com, uh, comments or questions from the commission? No? Pretty straightforward?
Just an observation. It just seems like there's still a lot of moving parts and we don't have everything here. There is some sense of urgency over the timing of the grant.
One, one moment. It looks like we're not picking you up on the microphone. We might need to pull it closer to you.
What I'm saying is that it, it still seems like there, there's some, you know, moving components or at least unsettled components. And, and, uh, you know, just parts of it feel premature, however, you know, recognizing there is some level of urgency with the grant that is, you know, has, has a stale date on it. And, you know, it would, I'm, I'm not sure what, what, uh, you know, the best moves are here. It's just, um, you know, clearly this is something that's within the city's sphere of influence and, and should more than likely happen. But, you know, are we actually dealing with all the information that we need? I don't feel so.
Well, I think at this time, we're just talking about pre-zoning for the annexation itself, right? So this isn't actually the annexation. This is just sort of getting settled, what the zoning is going to be on the parcels that are included in the annexation. Is that?
Yeah, that's, that's accurate.
Okay.
Okay. Fair enough, yeah. So that makes it pretty straightforward.
Yeah, it's just, yeah, okay. Okay, anything else from any of the commissioners? No? Public? No? Okay, um, I guess at this time, I'd like to, um, call for a motion to adopt the resolution. If anybody is so inclined.
I will. Okay. I move that the Planning Commission adopt a resolution entitled Resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Cloverdale, recommending to the city council adoption of an ordinance, pre-zoning approximately 9.2 acre acres of developed land, commonly known as the Six Acres, Six Acres Annexation Area. That, there's several APNs listed. I'm not going to read those, but.
We do have to read them by title.
I do?
Yeah.
Okay. And they are APN, uh, 116 dash 290 dash 001 T0. That doesn't look right.
That's 2009.
20 dash 009, 00, no, 0112015, da, dash 017 dash 0192022 dash 024116310001 to the two-family residential R2 zoning district.
Thank you, Commissioner Waggy. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Commissioner Cadel, for the second. Do we have a roll call, please?
Yes, thank you, Vice Chair. So that is a, uh, motion by Waggy, seconded by Commissioner Cadel, to waive reading of the text. Just going to say that to be official and to adopt the following resolution that you already read by title. With that, start with the Commissioner Waggy.
Aye.
Commissioner Cadel?
Aye.
Commissioner Carney?
Aye.
Commissioner Hovertz?
Aye.
Chair, Vice Chair Sanders?
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero with two being absent, Chair AC and Commissioner Spengler.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. So that brings us to the next agenda item, E2, municipal code amendments. Think these are more or less regarding the Six Acres annexation as well.
Not really, actually.
No, we're, we're done with Six Acres now. These are totally unrelated.
Oh, that's it? So this is the bushes?
This is kind of a laundry list of house cleaning items. We've got the presentation up in a second here, so. Thanks, Mike. Okay, so this is, uh, zoning and muni code amendments, so, or muni tech, muni code text amendments. So unlike most, uh, you know, presentations that we do when we, you know, do a project and go through it and then at the end kind of see if you ask questions. I was thinking, since there's, you know, it's kind of all over the map and there's several different things here that some of them aren't related at all. That, you know, after each one, if you guys have comments or questions, just, let's just have, throw, throw them out there to me as we go along. Instead of waiting till the end, because like I said, it's, there's too many to, you might forget what you were, um, wanted to talk about. So, well, why we're here, same thing as the last one, actually, um, that the planning commission has, uh, the authority to recommend, um, amendments to the zoning and zoning text to the city council. So that's why we are here tonight, for the planning commission to hopefully make a recommendation to the city council. After the end, we'll ask the commission to adopt the resolution. Yeah, you can go to the next one, Mike. So for the first one, let's jump right in. So, uh, some of these are kind of straightforward and, you know, like I said, it's kind of a laundry list of, of, uh, housekeeping, housekeeping items, for lack of a better term. Some of these are, are, you know, because of state law that, uh, we have to update our code. And some of these, like this one, our own code was, uh, kind of, kind of incorrect. And, um, so this is, uh, our request or our suggestion here is to amend, uh, section, amend section 10.28.070, which is 24-minute parking. Because, uh, as you can see, our street signs say 20-minute parking. And so the police cannot issue a ticket if the code doesn't match the sign. So instead of changing all the signs out, the, upon recommendation by the police chief, it was cheaper and more, you know, make more sense to just change the code to say 20-minute parking. So that's what this.
And, and normally, we've bundled these together because the police chiefs asked us to complete this one. It's not really land use, but since we're, we just kind of put them all together for efficiency's sake.
All the rest are out of the zoning. This is, uh, chapter 10. This is in the muni code. So, any questions on that one at all? It's pretty straightforward.
So this isn't going to cost the city anything, right? Because the signs are already there.
No, we'll save, yes, the signs are staying and don't have to repaint any curbs. Maybe have to repaint them if they're not as green, but, you know, yeah, the, we're just changing the text of the code. Match the signs. All right? All right, so the next one, uh, next slide, please. So, uh, may have heard a lot about, there's, you know, since like 2017, there's been like over 70-something new housing laws. And SB9, SB10 were last year, um, that was one of the big ones. So, in a nutshell, what this is just, this is, this is, this is not, uh, SB9 code. This is just one thing, the SB9 allows a lot of stuff, but this is one thing that, uh, we can fix in our code. That'll, um, get us in, 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 into compliance with, with at least one simple aspect of it, and that is the design review. Because with, what SB9 is, it's basically a, a small lot or a single-family zoned subdivision. So basically any lot in the city and anywhere in the state that is zoned R1 or allows single-family houses, uh, the property owner can split it and put two units on each one, so essentially allowing four units. Without, uh, and the city cannot require any design review, um, or public hearings. So, right now, our design review code says, uh, that major design review going to the planning commission to present plans for two units or more is, if someone's proposing just two units, they have to come here and, you know, show the plans and all that. So, to get us in correspondence with, uh, SB9, um, we're, uh, recommending that the code be amended to, uh, require major design review for five residential projects that, that are proposing five units or more instead of two. And later on, uh, we may come back with some codes to, um, to, I guess, address the, the rest of SB9. But I think when, when we were, I kind of bounced this off of the city attorney, um, and I believe his feedback was, we kind of just can, kind of like with the ADU, when the ADU, uh, regulations came in, a lot of that we could just rely on what the state says. We don't have to, actually have to amend our code, you know, um, to address all the other stuff that it talks about. But this simple one, designer view, we thought, uh, why not do that while we're here? So, I know that's a kind of confusing and a lot, lot in a nutshell there, but is there any questions on this one?
So you're, just to clarify.
Uh-huh.
You're going through 1803150 design review?
Yep.
And you're done with it? You've already gone through everything?
No.
Okay.
I'll, on the next one.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because I do have questions, but I don't, if you have more, then I just.
Yeah, well, the next one is also designer view, but this part of the designer view is just from going from two units requiring major design review to five units requiring major designer view.
Okay, so my question is, um, if I have a parcel and if we change this, that means that, I understand the lot split. I totally get that. But if I have a lots, a lot right here and I want to put five units, I could do that. The, the, the question I have is that when an item comes in front of the planning commission, the public has an opportunity to speak up.
Yep.
But by doing this, they won't have that opportunity.
And the state law says you can't, we can't require that. That's the state law says.
So, um, is it five or is it four?
Four.
Four, so then.
SB9 says you can build up to four.
So then we could change that to four instead of five?
No, because if they propose four, then we would be requiring designer view and the state law allows them to build four without any designer view. So we're, that's why we're going to five, so that they could build four without any designer view.
But five requires you to come.
Yeah, five would require.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Okay, um, so next one, next slide, please. So this is also a designer view, but this is more about the findings. So another parts of state law, um, talk about the requirements to, uh, require a project to be generally appear in keeping with the character of the neighborhood and, and, um, requiring designer view that is based on, that is not based on objective regulatory standards is against state housing laws now. So, that kind of that simple one, uh, so our, our recommendation is to amend, uh, these three findings. When, when we approve a designer view, um, project and we, you know, we give you guys a resolution. In that resolution, it has findings that we, um, that we, you know, address to say why the project is incorp, is, is meets, meets the findings or not. And these are those three findings that we've been relying on. Number three, we basically just have to get rid of, because like I said, that one talks about the general appearance of the proposal is in keeping with the character of the neighborhood. That's against state housing law, so we're recommending to get rid of that one. Number two, we can keep, and number one, we're just taking out the part that talks about, um, that the project shall adhere to design guidelines for the city. Because our design guy, so we do have design guidelines and we have design standards. So when you were just, I don't know if your question was about this, but our design guidelines, they're not even adopted. So we can't require, you know, a project to adhere to something that's not even adopted. But our design standards are adopted, but not all of them, I was looking at them earlier today, and not all of them are objective standards. So we do have to go through our design standards and amend those. But for the most part, it looks like they actually, we probably did, we did a pretty good job and we made them. So a lot of them look like they're, they are objective. And objective means, you know, um, you know, like a five foot, like a setback is clearly an objective, like a 20-foot setback. Everybody knows what 20 feet, you can measure that, you know, but you can't really measure, uh, generally in keeping with the appearance of the neighborhood. You know, that's kind of hard to quantify, you know, from person to person, it could be different. So that's what the objective standards means. And so, yeah, what are, so, uh, I don't know if that was your question earlier, kind of about, is there other stuff in the design we have to do? So we have, we will have to probably come back later to look at our design standards to make sure all of those are, um, objective. But that, for now, we're just taking out these things.
Yeah, I did see that because there's wording on here that says pleasing settings, like that's subjective. And then excellence in architectural design, that could be subjective. And so I did notice that we had some that we were going to clean up.
Yeah, yeah, and those are the design standards?
Yes, this is, this one, the design review. And, uh, it had several harmonious, the city, uh, developed within the city are visually harmonious with their sites. That's another one that's subjective. But it makes it easier when something's objective.
Yeah.
Because as this, as the, uh, planning commission, we can say it is, you know, this is a fact.
Yeah.
You know, as opposed to, it's my opinion.
Exactly, yeah. Yeah.
Question, can you tell me what the difference is between a standard, oh God, I love, and guideline?
Yeah, so our, our standards have been adopted. They're, they're in our code. They're like section 18, whatever. But the guidelines, they're not even, they're, they're just referenced in our code. So it's, I guess, almost like the, I guess, that's a bad example, but in, in the annexation earlier, um, like fire had some comments, but they're not conditions of approval. They're comments that, that, and, you know, that's kind of a bad example. But, but essentially the standards, you know, they're, they're adopted. They're, they are in, they're a codified part of our ordinance. But we can't, you know, enforce things that aren't part of our ordinance. So that's essentially what the difference between the guidelines are in the standards.
So does, does this apply to only residential, uh, construction? Or is, does this apply to commercial and industrial as well?
So these, uh, these findings apply to all, all, um, uh, all, yeah, projects.
All projects. So, for example, recently, I think last year, maybe the year before, we had discussions regarding the wine warehouse on the south end of town. And we talked about the fencing and the signage and all that kind of stuff. And we asked the developer to sort of conform his designs to what we kind of wanted, right? What we wanted to see and what we thought that our community would benefit from, right? So, correct me if I'm wrong, but deleting these is basically taking that away from us, saying, okay, these developers can do these projects in any style or any way they really want to, so long as it's, uh, as it meets the prescribed standards that have been adopted, correct?
Yeah, and, yeah, that's correct. Yeah, you're, you're reading it correctly. But that isn't to say that, uh, the city can still, we can adopt, we can adopt, adopt objective standards, um, going forward. We still can do that. It's just the ones that we have here aren't objective. But, um, the ones that I'm, I'm suggesting to cross out aren't. But, yeah, I, you know, I guess if, uh, I'm, if, reading you correctly, Chair, that, uh, I don't know if there's a way to like, delete these just for residential ones or make a asterisk just for, or are you suggesting that maybe keep these for other projects? Is that what you were kind of thinking?
Well, you know, as a, as a community member here for most of my life, one of the reasons why I wanted to be part of this commission in the first place was sort of offer my opinion and, um, sort of maintaining the small-town feel of this community, right? And so by deleting some of these, like number three, general appearance in keeping with the character of the neighborhood, you know, you could say that the entire town really is only one neighborhood if you compare it to, you know, a large urban area. So, it's just a.
Well, yeah, you're right. The, the laws really are about residential. So it doesn't talk about industrial or commercial. But, you know, there are some, you know, like, I don't know how it would work if like, uh, you know, a mixed-use project, like there's commercial and industrial and residential, you know, um. But, but, uh, but I don't, you know, like I said, if it makes you comfortable, but we, we still have the ability to adopt, uh, the objective standards. And, and that could be for industrial too, or, uh, industrial or commercial.
But this section here that we're talking about applies to every project, correct?
Yeah.
Is there some way that we could split these out? I don't mean to make too extra work for you guys, but, you know, at the same time.
Yeah. The answer is, I think. Yeah. I think the answer is to get to objective design standards and, and adopt those. And just keeping out ambiguous language like character of the neighborhood and things like that. And just really being very prescriptive in what we're, what we want in a, in a new development. We want 20 feet. Some of the things we talked about with the wine co-op were very, um, they were objective. I mean, they said, you know, the building needs to break up every 20 feet. You need to change the elevation. And they were very prescriptive versus just, well, it doesn't fit with the neighborhood and we don't like it. So, I mean, really, I think the answer is that we work towards getting objective design standards that we can all agree on. And that way, there's no ambiguity. They really just want to remove the ambiguity. So you could say, planning commission denies the project because it's not keeping in the character of the neighborhood. It's like, well, what, what does that really mean? And so the state's trying to.
Rain it in.
Rain it in and.
Yeah, like, like back to, uh, Commissioner Waggy's question earlier, like, uh, you know. Yeah, like, like back to Commissioner Waggy's question earlier, like, uh, you know, there is adopted residential design standards and there's adopted commercial ones. And there's adopted industrial. And the industrial and residential ones are literally like, like five or seven things. The commercial ones, we went through, the city must have went through, you know, hired, hired somebody or whatever, but they, they're pretty detailed in the commercial ones. So, you know, maybe if that, and that might be what you're kind of looking at or talking about, like going at for the industrial ones, um, to beef up that, the design standards. Yeah, like I said, they're, they're pretty, they're pretty minimal. I was looking at them earlier today, there's like, I think there's really like five or seven. But the, for the commercial, it breaks it out to, you know, there's different ones for the TOD district and different ones for the downtown district and different ones for the OR.
And that's exactly what I was going to ask you because we changed on the transit oriental zoning and also the downtown, we changed the parking. So on the, um, on one of them, we, you don't have to have these requirements for parking. And on this section you do. And so if we're changing the guidelines, I just want to make sure that we're still having parking here that's mandated. And this part, we're going to be flexible. So is that going to change?
Parking? No, not with this, no.
And then maybe we could reword it so that, um, it's not subjective and it can be objective. So if we're wanting to have the character of the neighborhood, what does that mean? How can we make it objective so that it's not being kicked out?
Yeah.
Because that's going to kick out right there. I have no argument right there because it says, you know, keeping up with the character of the neighborhood, that doesn't tell me anything.
Yeah.
Agreed. Some cities have obje, uh, adopted objective design standards and we've got some examples. It's probably something we should have on our list to, to get done in the next certain period of time. It's, we're, we're working on it. So we'll, we'll report back. We can kind of keep this, keep this conversation going over the next few meetings as we learn more and report back.
A new project comes up. I know that when you're working on something like this, you have to be very careful because you have to go with the old standards or whatever objectives you have. Because a new project comes in and they, they're based on whatever you had, not what's the new stuff. And so it's good to start working on it.
Yeah, at least for the, for the, because we're, I think we just submitted our stuff to the state, our housing element to the state yesterday or the day before. I'm guessing that one of the things that's going to come out of our housing element is program to probably come up with residential, at least residential, uh, objective standards. But while we're making that effort, we can do industrial too, you know, if that's the, uh, the commission or the council's feeling. Questions on this one?
Um. How can somebody just take a look? I'd just be curious to take a look at some of the development standards for commercials, say, just to get a flavor for it.
And like an objective.
In your office or are they?
Yeah, they're on the, they're in the code.
They're on the website.
Yeah.
Right, you can look at them.
Yeah, I can.
Are you talking about our, the, our current ones or ones that have adopted the objective?
No, the ones that the city has. I mean, if, that would come into play if another wine warehouse wanted to build next door to the other wine house or something like that.
I can email them to you. Questions on this one? Next one's pretty easy. I shouldn't say that, but it's straightforward at least. Okay, so there's a new, new law that came out, or shouldn't say, yeah, it was twenty twenty. Actually, we just, me and Kevin got an email about this while we're doing this, while we're doing these other things, like about two months ago. We didn't even know about this, so we lumped it in. So law SB two thirty-four was effective in twenty twenty and it prohibits cities from requiring any kind of, uh, review, development standards, permitting, processing, or any fees for large childcare homes. And these are, uh, there's a difference between small and large. I think the small is up to eight kids and the large is up to fourteen kids. And so right now the code requires at least a, a plot plan and a business license. So essentially this is a law we are, uh, we, we have, we should, uh, not be, not be requiring the plot plan. So the, um, the proposal, the, uh, the recommendation is to amend the table, uh, eighteen oh four oh four oh dash A to, um, allow that, allow large family daycares as a permitted use. And then delete large family daycares. We have, we have, we had a section in our code about, uh, or that is development standards for large family daycares. So the recommendation is to delete that section since we can't require anything anyway.
Yeah, I mean, so currently it's, we call it a plot plan. You guys really probably haven't seen one of those. It's kind of, I approve those, but we, we still put conditions in it.
Plot plan's kind of like a designer view, but less in, uh.
It gets approved administratively, so. And there was, uh, I don't know, maybe ten years ago where they eliminated the need for any permits for small family daycares, up to eight. So cities had to change that. Now they've just increased it to fourteen.
Two, three years ago.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
So basically what you're saying is no, no permits, no designer review, no.
They still have to get like state permits, you know, of course, you know.
Well, yeah, that's on the state level though. But for our purposes.
License and you can't charge them any fees.
No business licenses even? Even though that's a business that's being conducted in the city? Okay.
Who?
Senate Bill two thirty-four. Yep.
What regulatory agency looks at them?
The child welfare.
Yeah, I forget the, um.
Yeah, I, I haven't written.
There is a state process that they have to get an inspection, they have to do fire things, they have to. So the state regulates the act, they do inspections. They've just eliminated our ability to do local permits on top of the state permit. So we, we can't say no to one of them, basically, as long as they, so it's not just, you know, it's not the Wild West where you just open one up. You still have to get the state permit and it's, it's fairly rigorous. It's just we don't have any local control over saying that we, you know, we, saying we don't want a daycare center on a, in a residential neighborhood. I mean, essentially the state law would supersede our zoning anyway. So we're just, we're just cleaning our zoning to match the state law.
How about notification?
There wouldn't, there wouldn't.
They don't even have to notify us? The state won't notify us? So we don't know, we have no way of knowing what daycares are where and how many kids there are and whatnot?
Honestly, I don't know if the state requires any kind of noticing or hearing. I don't think they do. I think it's, again, pretty prescriptive. You know, you've got the number of exits, you've got the exits, all those safety things, you pass that, then you're allowed to open.
I would think there should be some requirement that the police and the fire department at minimum should know that there's fourteen kids in that house.
I think the fire, because I, I got, you know, years ago and, um, we start, but yeah, I, the reason I had some kind of contact from the state was I got it from Rick, Rick Blackman at the fire. So they do, and they must do something. Fire was pretty aware of.
And the, the fire department knows where they are?
Uh, I, you know, I don't know if they have a map and all that, but I mean, yeah, like I said, Rick, uh, the fire, the fire marshal was, you know, he, he had a contact at the state and he seemed to be pretty aware of what they look for in their permitting and, you know. Yeah. Any more questions on this one? Okay, next, next slide, please. So this is, uh, so the next three are kind of be all about uses in commercial zones. So another law, um, so, uh, a state law SB two, this is from two thousand eight, even older ones. Our code is much out of date on this one. So right now our code allows emergency shelters or home shelters in two of our commercial districts with a plot plan, as you can see on the table there. They are allowed right now with a plot plan in the general commercial and the TOD. And the state law that passed in two thousand eight says that the cities must re, must allow, uh, these uses in at least one commercial zone without any zoning permit, you know, of course, building permit, fire, those kind of things. But, uh, we can't require a plot plan. So our recommendation is to amend the table to allow, uh, change the TOD, um, plot plan to just to be permitted. So that's what this one's about. SB two from two thousand eight.
So we have to have one zone where an emergency shelter can go without any discretionary permits from the city. But they would still require to have, uh, fire building permits, all those kinds of things. This is old. I mean, this is two thousand eight. I guess that this must have slipped through the cracks, but when we, as part of the housing element process, this was brought to our attention. This one, really our, our housing consult, our housing element consultant said the state may not certify our housing element until we get this done, since we're so far.
She said this was definitely, definitely going to be a comment. Not something that, you know, the city should think this was definitely going to be something that this HCD was going to say, do this.
So the chart over there is the way it currently stands? The chart, the table is where, where, where it currently stands?
Yeah, yeah.
And you want to change under TOD to a P on the, okay.
Questions about that one? Okay, next one, please. So this is also commercial. So, um, so this one is our, uh, so right now, um, as you see from the table, um, below the picture on the rule of zoning there, multifamily residential is either permitted or, you know, permitted outright, um, or with a plot plan in all commercial districts. In the GC, it requires a conditional use permit. You know, we're going through this, we're just kind of scratching our head like what, why that is, but, um, and one thing we were thinking that, you know, proposals to construct a new dwelling in, in this district, that, you know, uh, someone wants to build multifamily in one of these, uh, that meets housing or meets parking setbacks. And what, what is the benefit that we're really going to get requiring conditional use permit? And in this, in this picture right here of the zoning, you can see, there's not that many general commercial properties in the whole city. I think there's only twelve and there's seven or six shown right here in this picture. The top three on the, uh, on South Street have single family houses on them. The one, one oh one South Street, there's a single family house there and there's an empty lot between that and the gas station that, you know, that fast and easy one. And there's actually an application, actually he hasn't turned it in yet, but the gentleman who owns the one oh one south with the single family, he wants to add on to that and build, um, more resident, more residential, um, units in the empty lot. So, uh, you know, requiring a conditional use permit for, I just don't see what, you know, the need. Plus, like I said, it's already permitted in a plot plan in all the other zones. I don't, I don't know why the city came to a conditional use permit in that zone in particular, when, you know, uh, six of the properties or, or five of the properties are developed with residential uses and there's only twelve in the whole district. So, um, anyway, uh, so this one, just, this one is just about changing the, the table there to require a plot plan instead of conditional use permit. So it's still, like I said, it's, it still would require them to submit plans to the, you know, staff level. It's almost like a designer view, but not, you know, full blown going to the planning commission in a public hearing. And our feeling is that, you know, a proposal like that, that they're meeting parking, they're not proposing, you know, variances, that they're meeting setbacks in height, that, um, a plot plan review would be a sufficient, uh, should be a sufficient enough level of review for it, um, so.
This one's not mandated by the state.
No, no. Any other questions? All right, next one. So, uh, sort of, so this is also a commercial district. And this, how this one came about is, um, we've, I've, we've had not that, I, you know, like anything in the city. It's not like we've got a ton of, you know, when I say that we've got several questions, you know, there's only a handful of questions. It's not like, you know, getting fifty questions, but when there's only, you know, twelve parcels that are zone general commercial or, you know, so a handful of questions kind of makes a big deal. But some of our questions have been about, you know, people wanting to build essentially a one, you know, added unit to their commercially zone property. One of them, you know, is a business right downtown. They wanted to put a little unit in the back so the lady who, uh, owns the business, um, can, you know, live on the same property. Allowing single family in these commercial, in like downtown doesn't make sense, you know, it kind of undermines the multifamily. We want to get, you know, multiple units. But so I was thinking, hey, live work was kind of a good, uh, solution for that. And, but right now live work is only allowed in the industrial, it's only allowed in one industrial district, uh, the M one district with a conditional use permit. It's not allowed in any commercial zones. And I have this picture up because this shows, uh, this is Southeast Street at the corner of like railroad. So this is a little section of, uh, a section of the city that zones service commercial. Um, and I'm not going to say which one, but we do have an application in there now. Someone wants to, um, add basically, essentially a loft inside their warehouse. And, you know, require going to the planning commission and kind of like the last, my, I guess my same argument for the last one, you know, what is a full blown public hearing and a conditional use permit? Going to the planning commission for someone to add one unit that's, they're going to meet parking, they're going to meet setbacks and all that. So, um, I thought, uh, that why not allow live work in all the industrial, all the commercial zones? And just like on the last one, like we showed, you know, so what, what if that gentleman in the general commercial wanted to propose, you know, uh, live work units? Actually, speaking of that, the, uh, the depot hotel, what it was called years ago, which is a, there at the corner of the northwest corner there. It was a, when, I think years and years ago, literally was when the train station was up and in operation, it was the old depot and there was a hotel in like the, in the early nineteen hundreds.
You're talking about the Dante Bar, right?
No, the one across the street.
Cross, oh, cross, across the street, okay, yeah.
It's like an apartment building or something?
Yeah, so like, years ago, I guess it was, you know, it sat there and it was dilapidated and I don't know what it used to be, but it was probably sitting there empty for years. And the city wanted something to happen and the city allowed, uh, mult, some multifamily units on the top. And originally it was planned as like live work, essentially what there was, um, I think like they recalled them like cubo, uh, like incubator, you know, businesses were like, there was, uh, you know. So the bottom wasn't residential, but right now if you go there, it's all, it's residential on top and bottom. But essentially what they were thinking was live work, you know, which isn't allowed, um, so.
Yes, I mean, it's, it's, so it's, this amendment really would allow live work in all the commercial districts. So somebody could, you know, they still have to get building permits and it's a plot plan review. So it does go to us for an administrative check on design and things like that. But it's a, it's a good practice to, um, if it, it's, there probably won't be a lot of opportunities for this, but.
Yeah.
If someone can, yeah, if someone can live, you know, where they work and we can cut down on, on vehicle miles traveled, I mean, that's kind of the concept here. And it's, it's an old, it's an older concept, but, uh, you know, in some places it could be applicable, but folks can't do it because it's not allowed.
And then, you know, again, the kind of reason I showed this one, it's service commercial, there is, there is, like I said, there is that, uh, residential building. And then the parcel next to it, um, is, there's a single family house there too and it's own service commercial. So this area almost makes kind of perfect sense to me for like a live work thing. You know, there's other parts of the city where it would make sense too, but, um, I, I thought it makes, made perfect sense. So, you know, our proposal is to amend the table to allow live work in all commercial districts with a plot plan.
Sandra, can you talk into the mic a little bit more?
Well, there are development standards, so there are, there's a section that, uh, there's, there's a section in the code that specifically, um, talks about separation for uses. So, you know, you want, you want to, you know, be, ensure life safety, that kind of thing. So, um, it doesn't, our, our, I don't know if you're asking about our code, does it limit the number? It doesn't limit the number, but like, you know, that would still come down to density. You know, they couldn't put any more than the zoning would allow in setbacks. But the specific part about the live work development standards, the only one, forgive me, the only one that's coming to my head is the separation, like fire, uh, code, you know. So if someone's, you know, working down, they got a machine shop and they're living below that, you won't have good fire separation. So those things are written into our development standards for live work. So that part's in there. Yeah. Any other questions? Okay, next one, Mr. Mike? Okay, so live work again, so like I just said, uh, live work, um, is only right now allowed in the industrial with a conditional use permit. So essentially making the same argument that we just talked about, you know, uh, this, this one is asking the, the commission to, um, go along with our recommendation to amend the general industrial, uh, table, uh, uses to allow live work with a conditional, or sorry, with a plot plan instead of a, uh, use permit. So right now, as the table shows, it's allowed in the M with a conditional use permit. But just like we talked about in the, in the commercial zones, we think it makes sense to allow live work with a plot plan. Still subject to the live work standards that we just talked about. So that's all this one is.
One of the mills across the river that were annexed in, like New Forest, for, for example, somebody could live in one of the offices, is what you're saying?
Yeah, yeah, the code allows it right now with a conditional use permit.
Can they build a single family house on that property, like where he was talking about New Forest? Even though there is still industrial work happening there? Does that still count as live work or is that SFR at that point? Does that still count as live work or is that SFR at that point?
Uh, we have to look at the standards, let me see if I can.
Yeah, I mean, maybe that, that is a good example.
That's what we're trying to avoid, right? That's what we don't want.
That's, yeah, that is a good example, yeah.
Guy wants to live in the office, okay, put in a shower, great. But, you know, we don't want to have double wides popping up all over. Yeah, right, right, exactly.
This one seems a little, the potential for mischief is there.
I, I, I see, yeah. So you're thinking maybe in an industrial, keep the conditional? That has a potential to be more haywire.
Yeah, I, I.
Yeah, I think so.
That is a good point.
Certainly not against it, but it just, it just seems like it should take a little, right, it just takes a little bit more.
Seems fine, yeah, that's, that's, that seems right, reasonable to me. Yeah. Does the commission, does everybody kind of feel like that?
Yeah.
Yeah. So you're going to amend that?
Oh, yeah, to keep it, also we'll, uh, recommend it, we'll, we'll keep this as a conditional use permit. All right, next one, please, Mike? So this is, oh yeah, so, um, in our PD district, so you know, uh, the Bumgarner project that came along, we annexed that and we, that whole project was zoned PD, you know, it's not R1, not R2, so we have a special district, um, for projects like that that can be a planned development. And the intent of, and purpose of the planned development district is to allow flexibility in land use development standards. But it doesn't allow flexibility in only two. It says in section 10.0801OD, it prohibits variation from residential floor ratio FAR and res, and rear yard setbacks. However, uh, as this table on the right, this is, uh, right out of our, you know, the, um, zoning for, um, Clover Springs, which was approved sometime in like 1999, 2000. And you can clearly see that the rear yard setbacks are less than 20 feet, so this is just one example, but there's other, at least four examples of planned developments that we've approved over the years that allow residential rear yard setbacks. So our recommendation here is just to simply amend the code to reflect our past practices. So we are, uh, suggesting that the, the code, this section of the code be amended to allow variation in rear yard setbacks.
Just to really reflect what's on the ground.
Exactly. Does that make sense? Any questions on that one?
If you're using the setbacks, you still have the requirement, the, the, the potential for higher density then, same area?
The density was, wouldn't, the density is, is governed by, you know, the, the, the general plan designation, you know, it's eight units per acre or is it 12? That part wouldn't change. This, I guess, you know, could maybe allow them to build a bigger, but the FAR, we're not recommending, you know, changing that, so the FAR still kind of limits, you know, how big of a house they can build. This just, you know, if they've got a small lot, say, you know, they want to build a small lot subdivision, you know, it's having a 20 foot front and a 20 foot back, that's probably why some of these in the past have, you know, um, asked for these, uh, exceptions.
So are you reducing the setbacks?
No, this, this just allows the developers the option to do that.
Well.
Which they've already, we've already, we've already allowed clearly and even though the code says we, we can't allow that.
And the reason I'm asking is, um, how would the density bonus come into this? Because if, if a developer wants to use that, they can reduce the setbacks. So does that?
That's only unaffordable.
Unaffordable?
Yes, yeah, so this is for the plan development, which is pretty highly regulated instrument for development where we look at every aspect of the project and it goes to the planning commission and the council. So the idea is to, uh, you know, allow for more creative designs by maybe reducing setbacks and, um, and, you know, so we've already done it in the past, so I think this kind of reflects what we already have on the ground in places like Clover Springs and a few others.
So it's not going to do anything for the, the density, you're not going to be, you're not going to change the FAR. You're not going to get a bigger house on the lot. All that's going to do is allow the builder to position the structure with a little more leeway, is what you're saying.
Well said.
So the setbacks now, let's say rear yard are 20 feet, right?
Oh, that's what the standard will be required.
And in Clover Springs, they, we approved, uh, 15 foot variance.
Yeah, or, yeah, back in 1999.
Back in 1999.
And that's the oldest one I could think of, you know, there was in Bumgarner, but I think, you know, with Bumgarner, kind of like, uh, Commissioner Hoover's brought up that that was an affordable one, so they were, and they were doing 100% like Bumgarner was kind of a special example because of so many, they were going above and way above beyond the affordable part that they could almost ask for anything they wanted.
Right, there's nothing, we can't really turn them down.
Yeah.
Right, that was the point, because it was affordable.
Yeah.
But, but when you have a density bonus, it's just like your wild cards and how are you going to use your wild cards?
Right.
And since we have no choice, then when they use the setback cards, when they use their setback and use that, now instead of having three cards, they have two cards and they just use one of them for the setbacks. And so now you're still going to give them three cards, you know, that's if it's affordable, like, um, Kevin said. But that's why I was just wondering about that and wanting to know on the setbacks, because then, you know, um, if it is affordable, they don't have to use their, their wild cards for setbacks, does, if that makes sense?
It does.
Personally, I would rather not allow this variation just because of the fact that if you start decreasing the setbacks as the houses get taller and taller, two stories, three stories maybe, who knows? Then you're looking straight down into the guy's bathroom behind you, right? So personally, I, I wouldn't include this one. That's just my opinion.
This was, uh, also in Sunrise Hills 2, which was approved in 2015. Those, uh, the rear yard setback is a minimum of 10 feet. And that's like Sunrise, like Orion Court, Pal, uh, Polaris.
Right, south end of town, adjacent to Bumgarner, behind the, uh, Cooperage.
That wasn't affordable, um, and we allowed it, so again, this is just, you know, not to say that not allowing it won't, but it won't do anything, but, you know, we've, we've clearly allowed this with, when the code says we shouldn't, so, you know, to me, it just makes sense to reflect the code, what we've, the code should reflect what is in, kind of like the, the police, the, the, the signs, you know?
Yeah.
The code should reflect what's out there and our code right now doesn't reflect what we've been allowing and approving.
Question, in order to allow it, did you have to have a, did they have to have some sort of a legal variance that was granted?
Yes, um, but, you know, kind of like, uh, one of the last one about the, the Depot Hotel and, you know, I, there's some things that happened with our, I, I don't know how they did it, I don't, you know, they, there were things that happened with the code that clearly says, the code says this and in reality, it's, it's not that, you know, um, I don't, I don't have an answer for why something's happened in the past, but, um, there's, and this one, for, you know, there's multiple PDs out there that, um, this is, this is, uh, this wasn't enforced.
So it's just not enforced, but it was, I mean, I, I, I was just wondering about the mechanism, if it, was it like a zoning ordinance? I mean, like a variance to a zoning ordinance or something like that?
Why did they allow it? That's the question.
Yeah, no, it's, it's a good question. I mean, a plan development is like its own little zoning ordinance onto itself. So it's like, we want to do something creative or we want to have more density or something that's very, it's different from our current zoning, they can apply for this plan development. Within the plan development, it has all the development standards, um, and that gets put into the zoning ordinance ultimately, but, it's really designed to have more creative projects so people can position houses differently.
In fact, here's, here's another one, Creek, the Creek side subdivision was PD 16, um, and, and that one kind of makes sense, you know, that one was near the lots, it was like between South Cordell Boulevard and, and a creek and like lot number five and six got approved with 18 foot setback, uh, the rear, rear yard setbacks, um.
I mean, we can, we can leave it the way it is, um, or we can, you know, research it more, bring it back, or.
You know, if we didn't change it, it's not like we're not, you know, we're saying no, that it can't happen, it just, it just gives them front end.
I don't, I don't see how we, we should be saying yes, we clearly have said yes plenty of times when the code says, you, you know, so if we leave it, it seems that we should be saying no to these in the future, you know?
I agree with that, we should be saying no to these in the future if they don't meet setbacks, unless it's an affordable housing development where they're asking for that concession, there's nothing we could do about that, but.
But at the same time, you know, from just, you know, just looking at, looking out for Mike, when I'm talking with developers, you know, the worst thing is when, you know, developer asks for something and they point to something that's right down and said, well, you allow it here and we, they can, and this, they can point to, I just pointed out three right here, you know, there's, it, that's just tough when they come in and say, well, you allow it here, you allow it here, well, you know, what the heck?
Yeah.
So that's all I'm trying to clean up in the code is, we clearly allowed it, that's been the practice, so.
We get it, we understand why this is in here.
I get it too, but, you know.
Well, let's just.
Is that something like an incentive that we can do or something for the city? Sometimes the city offers certain incentives and maybe doing, working with the setbacks could be something that, it could be an incentive. Here's our, our regulations, however, we'll offer an incentive, you know, because sometimes the contractors want to get something out of it or a developer wants to get something out of it.
If it's affordable, yeah.
Well, what if it's not affordable? Can they?
Well, I think we would have to do some sort of variance and make findings, um, and those are normally findings are for a variance, are there something unusual about the lot that would not allow you to make the standard, like it's really hilly or something like that?
Technically, that's what we should, you know, if we are going to allow these things, that's, Kevin, right, we should be allowing these with the variance, but we've clearly allowed these in the past without them.
So you don't have to allow it if in your judgment it's not appropriate, it's just allow, you're, I mean, your proposed change would just make that possible, but not.
Yeah, it doesn't say that, you know, sure, yeah, every project that they build has to be less, they can build it with the standard if they want.
Then the city staff would say no or something like that. That would be, if, if this were in place and somebody said, I want to cut the, cut down some kind of a setback and you thought that was a bad idea, then you would have the authority to say, no, I won't grant you that, is that correct? Or is it the city, is it the planning commission? Who, who has that authority?
Yeah, it would be the planning commission. Well, I guess, because if it's, because the PD is essentially a zoning change, so it'd be, it'd be planning commission recommendation to the council.
So if we didn't like the guy looking down into the bathroom next door, we could?
Yeah, you could, yeah. A PD, a, a project like this is going to come to you, it's going to come to you for review, um.
Well, the, and the, the idea of the plan development too is really, um, to look at the whole project so that you would hope that the developer would position the homes in a way that they wouldn't be looking at each other and it just gets a higher level of scrutiny. You know, in exchange for the lesser standards, we're going to look at it more, uh, with more scrutiny and we're going to expect maybe a higher level of project to, for a plan development, you know, kind of in exchange for not making the standards. And it's not really not making the standards, I mean, they kind of, in the plan development, they, they dictate, they, they suggest their standards and we review that and we approve that and the council approves it too, so.
So what areas do we have that would be, uh, an acceptable place to put one of these plan developments? Across from the hamburger ranch, right, that, over there, south of Santana Drive on the east side of the freeway?
Like Vista Oaks, like that.
Yeah, Vista Oaks, yeah, Vista Oaks and then the, the resort concept thing behind Royzer and all that, anywhere else?
Well, it could really be on any, any residential.
Yeah, but we're pretty much loaded out, right? There's not that many
Well, even like.
Areas where we could possibly put a plan development.
Yeah, they're usually larger developments.
Yeah.
The Creekside one that I just mentioned ago, um, that one has since expired, um, but that's, you know, so those are odd shaped, you know, do you know where that one is?
Yeah.
Yeah, like, because, because those are kind of odd shaped lots, because they're kind of long and they follow the creek, so because, because of their shape, that, that could, those are, to me, that's a good cat, uh, 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 a, a good example for something that would be beneficial for that.
Yeah, but those have creek, the creek is in the backyard, right?
Yeah, yeah, well, I guess wherever the house would be, but yeah.
Well, I'm just saying, like, you know, if the property line follows that creek there, there's not, not going to be another house right behind there because there's a creek. So I'll get it, okay.
You know, we can, we can suggest this to the council or not, it's not a major deal. It's, it's just looking at what we've done and trying to conform to that and give the opportunity for a potential future developer to have the same opportunity to have that reduced setback.
And to avoid the odd conversation of.
But if you're, if you're not comfortable with it, you know, we don't have to, again, it's probably not going to be applied that often, honestly, but.
Any questions about this one?
I think we beat this one to death, huh?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think the, I think the next one's the last one and it's pretty straightforward and easy, yes, the fences one. So the building code in 2019 changed to require a building permit for a fence that's seven feet or taller. Before 2019, it required a fence, a, a building permit for a fence that was six feet or, or tall, or, yes, uh, or taller. So right now our zoning code, um, says that the maximum height of fences, uh, is six feet, which we want to change that to be in compliance or in conformance with the, the building permit or the building code, which is seven feet, so. This is essentially allowing, uh, people to put up a seven foot fence, uh, in their side and rear yard, uh, just like the, the building code would allow.
So five foot, uh, planks plus two feet of lattice on the top, basically.
Sure, yeah, or, or solid, yeah, yeah. And this is just the side and the, and the, and the rear, not the front, of course. Any questions on that one? Okay, and that's, next slide, and, uh, we just recommend that the planning commission, um, adopt the tax resolution, recommend approval to this city council with the amendment of, uh,
Keeping the use permit.
Uh, live work in the M1 with the CUP.
What do you guys think?
See, my, my feeling was you guys were comfortable leaving it as, we're proposing it, like moving it to the council and see what they're saying.
Yeah, I mean, I don't love it, but I get where you're coming from, whatever. I think it's more important to, uh, sort of pick out that live work in the M1 district. That'd be the fight that I would be more willing to fight than allowing a variance for a setback.
I hear you. We will, we will keep that.
Commissioner Hoover's, can you turn your microphone on, please?
Um, anyways, um, on the setbacks, the reason why we have setbacks is to have that, that space between one person and another. And so that's why, for me, it's, I would like to leave it the way it was, but if we are moving forward with it, maybe have a recommendation for the council just to be mindful of that space, that that's what it's for, so.
And we're not going to actually reduce the setback, right?
We are reducing it, aren't we?
We're just saying that we will allow a variance to be considered as proposed to the, the commission and the council for plan developments. We're not talking about a single family house that somebody wants to stick right up against the back fence, right, or anything like that.
Yeah, and it, I don't know that it would be a variance necessarily, but it, they would have the ability to suggest a 15 foot setback with, with the plan development proposal. They could maintain 20 or anything in addition to the, the minimum. I don't know if that makes sense, it's, so they're going to come in with their guidelines for what they want to do in their plan development. This would allow them to go to 15 feet.
What is it before?
It's 20.
20.
20, right, okay. So we are reducing it.
No, well, if the planning commission didn't want it.
It just.
Oh, it's the planning commission, okay, so the plan commission would make that decision.
Yeah.
The plan development would, well, the city council would.
The city council, right.
And we can't say anything about that. So we're looking for a recommend, or a motion, I think.
Uh, before we go to a motion, we definitely need to open up the public hearing.
Yeah, yeah, so I'd like to open it to a public hearing at this time, if we have anybody raising their hand on, in the room or online, on the phone. raising their hand on, in the room or online, on the phone.
Thank you, Vice Chair, there is one member of the public present in the chamber and no one online and no one is raising their hands.
Okay, thank you. I'd like, so I will close public comment on this item at 7:28 and bring it back to the commission. Do we have any final comments or questions? Seeing none, um, we're to call for a motion at this time, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept them all with the exception of 18.06.30A, which is the M1 zone, right?
All right, Commissioner, just.
Send, send it on to the council.
For the record, we do have to read it by title only, so unfortunately, the, the motioner has to read the full thing to, and then wave.
Sorry.
Reading of the text, it is a unfortunate part about being the motioner.
Make a motion to adopt a resolution, let's see, is this it right here, yeah. Resolution of the planning commission of the city of Cloverdale recommending the city council the adoption of the ordinances, amending Cloverdale municipal code sections 18.09.30, fences, walls and hedges, 18. dot O, 08, dot 010, planned unit development, zoning district, dot 18, dot 03, dot 150, design review, major and minor, 10.28, dot 070, 20-minute parking table, 18.04, dot 040, dash A, uses permitted in residential zoning districts. Table 18.05.030, uses permitted within commercial zoning districts. We'll delete. Correct, and we'll amend to remove table in 18.06.030-A, uses permitted, permitted within industrial zoning district. 18.09.295, special development standards for the live-work units and deleting section 18.09.160, large family daycare.
Thank you. So to clarify for the record. Before we get a second, to clarify for the record with, uh, City Planner Miranda, which section are you taking out of the table 18.06.030-A? Perfect. All right, Vice Chair, looking for a second? Do we have a second?
I'll, I'll second.
Roll call, please? Sorry about that, Vice Chair, thank you, um. Commissioner Waggy?
Aye.
Commissioner Carney?
Aye.
Commissioner Cadel?
Aye.
Commissioner Hoovers?
Aye.
Vice Chair Sanders?
Aye.
Motion passes with five to zero, with Chair AC and Commissioner Spengler being absent.
Thank you. Okay, so that brings us to where here? New business? Do we have any new business to discuss? No?
No new business.
Do not have any items.
Commissioner reports, department reports, planning department, any?
Yeah, just real quick, uh, at the last council meeting, um, Commissioner Waggy was appointed for another four-year term, so thank you for all your service and being willing to do that, really appreciate all your comments and, and your work on the planning commission. Our next meeting is June 6th, right now, we don't have anything queued up, so we may be asking to cancel that one. And then lastly, uh, on May 20th, we're going to have a, uh, basketball grand opening at City Park for the new basketball courts, and we're going to have activities and giveaways and all kinds of fun stuff, pizza, and so if you guys are in town that day, uh, we'll, we'll send out a flyer on the exact time, I think it's, we're thinking one o'clock, so, hope to see you guys there.
Thank you. Okay, uh, so that brings us to direction on future agenda items, does anybody have any direction for city staff? For future agenda items? Seeing none? Uh, okay, I guess we can go ahead and adjourn this meeting to the next regular meeting of the planning commission, which is TBD, right?
It's, well, it's scheduled for June 6th.
June 6th, for June 6th, 2023.